Good. This is Brad Alidus and Preston will pray for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads please. Father, Christ has had me father with you. Thank you for this day and for your blessings. And father, now this school is as we go in this council meeting, have any father just open our minds and help us to just do what's best for the county. In Jesus name I pray. Amen.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Yeah, we called this meeting this morning. We need to go over some things here on our budget request and try to narrow some of these items down so that we can get this budget presented to the state by October the, was it the fifth or the sixth?
Sixth.
Six. So wanted to, wanted to have those discussions this morning and then will hopefully help us get to the point where we're ready to present that to the state. I guess first off, John, do you want to come up from the park? There were some questions there that John had. We had one employee that he wanted to.
Good morning.
Morning, John.
Well, I come in here about a week or so back and evidently I didn't have all my numbers straight, so we'll try this once again. The reason I'm here is over Cindy Rainbow, just trying to get her a little more money up to snuff, get her up where we're might, just like Tim, he's at twenty, forty an hour. Cindy's at eighteen eighty-eight. I just kind of like get them two a little bit more even. I'm not here to increase my budget whatsoever. If anything, it's going to decrease it from what you guys have for 2026. I'd like to stay at three, three, three hundred sixty-six thousand, four sixty. I'm going to be taking money from the gatehouse money, which is at forty-five thousand right now. I'd like to put Cindy up at forty-two thousand. And that will lower my gatehouse down to forty-two five sixty-eight with no additional appropriations or no extra on the budget.
Does everybody understand if you've got your book, it's on page six, basically that's the park secretary that he's going to bump up and then decrease the gate. So it's basically a wash. You know, so that's, that's what John is requesting this morning. So I think we'll probably, I guess, can we go ahead and vote to do that?
No.
No, we have to wait until the next meeting to actually approve that. But this would be the first reading of that change if the council so desires, so.
What do you want to take her, forty-two?
Yeah. Right now she's at, after the four percent, she'd been at forty thousand eight thirty-eight, so I'm not raising this very much, eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah, I saw that.
You know, and before, just like on the park secretary, you know, if I ran under right there, I've always just took from another line item, like from the gatehouse itself. That's, I guess, that's where we kind of got mixed up here and, you know, just, I've always stole from another line item to pay, same thing as I do on my groundskeeping, you know, so.
Just a lateral move basically. What'd you say the gate would go to on that then, John?
The gate would be, it should be right around forty-two five sixty-eight on the gatehouse. That will lower that number from forty-five thousand to forty-two five sixty-eight.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to get those figures down right here.
And I think they should put her up around twenty fourteen or twenty nineteen an hour.
Gotcha. Okay. So now we know what John's requested there. Has anybody got any more questions about that? So basically his bottom line budget will stay the same. All right. Well, we'll, when we convene or have our next meeting, then this will all be voted on and we'll pass it through.
Do I need to be present?
You would not have to be here. We know what the numbers are now. We just wanted to bring you in to get those numbers and know what we were dealing with as far as the budget goes. So, no, you would not have to be here.
Okay.
Okay. But we'll definitely put that on the agenda. That'll be one of the things on there, so. All right. If there's no further questions for John, thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Public defender, Ryan.
I'm glad you had me. This is about my amended request for 2026 to increase the legal secretaries to forty-three thousand, make them both even. It's a difference from my last request of about five thousand three hundred ninety dollars. And that's it. That's the, that's the main request. So we had the handout from last week or last month, sorry, early this month, and we have another copy of that if you guys want it to look at.
This is corrected because it's what the, what the, was sent to us from the Congress office to correct it to that.
Thank you. Need to ask for a vote. Would we vote on this since that's for?
For twenty twenty-six?
Mm-hmm. For twenty-six or that should be the twenty-five?
October sixth.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
We'll do that at the October meeting.
So then, today then, I would ask for the vote for the twenty-five to finish out the last six or seven days?
They cannot vote on anything today.
Okay. Oh, no vote at all?
No vote at all.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's just bringing up to fifty-six thousand, forty-three thousand for the other two, two and three, and it makes everybody even?
Anybody have any questions for Ryan on that? Well, what you've got there on the paper shows 2026, his request, but he also wants to move forward with that for 2025, the remainder of 2025.
That's correct.
Two separate requests there. So if you have any questions about that, you need to ask them now and then, like I said before, it'll be the October meeting before we'll be able to vote for that. So just wanted to go over everything, make sure everybody's on the same page. Any questions for Ryan about that request?
And, and again, I do want to say that, that five thousand three hundred ninety dollars, that difference gets reimbursed. So even out of county money, that'll only be sixty percent of that, forty percent gets reimbursed to that from the state, so relatively small bump up.
Right.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
All right. Thank you. Let's see here. Stephanie, did you want to come forward?
Okay, I'm here for the general election stipend. Apparently there was confusion on that. It's a general election stipend that was presented in July of 2024. The law went into effect July first of 2024 and was brought to all the clerks across the state as attention from State Board of Accounts and Indian Election Division. So it pertained to those counties that do not have a voter registration board. So legislators, legislators added to that code and so that IC code is three dash seven dash twelve dash twenty-two. So our county does not have a separate voter registration board, so those duties fall upon myself. And so they had added a B section to that state statute that your fiscal body could give a stipend to the clerk up to twenty-five hundred dollars, and that's for general elections. And so the recorded meeting for July of 2024 and the August meeting and the minutes reflect, are correct. But the salary ordinance says general presidential elections, which in the state of Indiana, under IC code three dash five dash one dash two, there's only five types of elections in the state of Indiana that they recognize. One being the general election, municipal election, a primary election, a school district election, and a special election. So a presidential, what we've coined that term, is part of that general election category under that state statute. But there's, under state law, there's not a labeled presidential election. So you all had voted on, Councilman Fleming went ahead and matched it for two thousand dollars. And so I look at it as a clerical, you know, human error that it was labeled a presidential. This stipend does not get paid on off-election years, nor does it get paid for municipal election, which only one we have in this county is the city of Salem. So it's just general elections only. But on the budget line item, it was, it's labeled as presidential. And on my presentation, forty-five seconds into that meeting on budget hearing, part two, and when I turned in my budget, I made notation that the general election stipend had to be brought back in to play because we have election in 2026.
Anybody have any questions for Stephanie on that? I did, to shed some light, I did have our attorney look into that just to make sure. And what Alyssa had give to me, you know, says that there's nothing prohibiting the council from awarding that in every election, but it doesn't say, the way we did the approval of it was for presidential election. So she said that was okay. She didn't see anything that said that you had to do the stipend on anything other than the presidential election years. So we may need to have her look at that again too before we make a decision. But that is what, what she had found under that when, when I asked her to take a look at it, so.
I would recommend you take a look at it again.
Yeah, it was, it was tabled from July twenty-four meeting to August because she reviewed it and gave her opinion then. I did review the email that was forwarded to me and to me it appears that she thought it was something new. But this is something that she gave her opinion on back in July to August meeting. She presented her opinion in August of 2024. Because under state statute, there's not a presidential election as part of the general category. And so that's what the state statute that they added was for general elections.
This information that Bubba requested is her second review of that, so we can have that reviewed again. So just, it's different from her first initial review of that, just to be transparent, everybody know what that is. Stephanie, what's this might go for?
I'm sorry?
What, the stipend, what is it, was it covered on, on your guess? Was it held covered?
Well, it's, it's a stipend for the circuit court clerk myself. It's a stipend because legislature, legislative bodies and the clerks association, when they were presented in session, it was because the beast now of general elections, what they had became. And so it's a stipend to go above if your county, it only comes into play if your county does not have a voter registration board. So like currently, we have a county election board. So those counties that have voter registration boards, they usually match their salary, what they pay the county election board. The county election board gets paid on off-election years and election years, and it's six thousand a year. So if we want to implement a voter registration board in our county, most time we're going to match that, so that would be a six thousand dollars every year, every election. So it's kind of, you know, what do you want to do? I mean, because I will tell you the how elections and what we see on the national level, Washington County is not exempt from that. I mean, elections, just since I started, this is my twelfth election, back in March of 2018, when I started with the county, it has progressively gotten worse. And if you think that Washington County is like Mayberry and we don't have, you know, all what I call passionate voters, you're wrong. I mean, it's, it's nonstop and basically there's two of us and then I have to pull my girls on the court side over to help. So basically it's myself and another deputy that run the elections and voter services. So I mean, during election time, it's, it's long hours. And so they recognize that since clerks are on salaries.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We'll have our review again and likewise it'll be the October meeting before we would vote on anything for that.
Okay. So basically you all be voting on, because, because I looked at it as a clerical error and I did not receive, I did not receive that ordinance when it was written. So I didn't realize, so I was just looking on the budget and kept, but it's, it's general, the way it was, it was headed. It wasn't, the IC code's not for presidential elections.
Yeah. I think the way that we approved it before was just for presidential elections. But that'll be what we'll need to.
Yeah, I think where the confusion came in, that there was a presidential election on the horizon because the recorded meeting and the minutes do not reflect a presidential only stipend.
So that's what we would need to determine, but we'll have her check again and then we'll make that decision in October.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, Kelly, yes.
Morning, Jim.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ladies, how are you today? There you are, sir. Good morning. Mr. Young?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll start. We were looking at the proposed budget that was sent to us here a couple of weeks ago. And I was looking at the proposed six percent raise that was looking to be given for dispatch. One way of thought, and I understand looking at it through the county's eyes, a six percent raise and the elimination of overtime, that looks really good on paper. But that thought process is linear and it doesn't really affect, if you look at it from thirty thousand feet up, it doesn't affect the people who are involved in this as well, specifically the dispatchers. If the six percent is awarded under the agreement that overtime is going to be eliminated, my dispatchers are going to be taking a pay cut. This authorization for them to have four hours of overtime that was included into their schedule since back in the Claude Combs era, that is, that's well documented and has been that way. It was never codified. It was never put in the salary ordinance or the handbook or anything like that. It's just something that's gone there. This is something that I've had conversations with the sheriff and individuals, people on the board. I seen, I saw this as a problem at the very beginning and I've been working to try to change that and I've been doing my due diligence. But breaking down the numbers, if you look at it, we, the dispatcher will be taking a pay cut right now. At six percent, the amount of money that they, that they get right now with the four hours of overtime, it's, comes out to about forty thousand three ninety-eight. Okay? With the proposed raise, the dispatchers are going to be losing about six hundred dollars a year. And my shift leads are going to be losing about seven hundred dollars a year. Even if you increase that raise to a seven percent, dispatchers are still going to be losing a couple of hundred bucks a year and the leads are going to be losing about three hundred dollars a year. That sounds nominal in the grand scheme of things and everything, but you know, these are people that, you know, they have to put food on their family's table and they're working and you're asking them to continue on working for the county at a decrease in pay overall, right, if you take away the overtime. If we're going to make this even out, then the raise needs to be commensurate to where at least they're not losing money. Couple that with the fact that the employee contributions have increased significantly. If they don't get the funds that they need to at least break even, they're working, basically they're paying to work here. All right? It's, it's not fair. No other, no other department in the county got a decrease in pay. This is, is, is recommended for a decrease in pay. All right. And if you break down the numbers, if you look at it and, and you take it to where you, you put all that stuff aside, nine-one-one is operating five hundred and eighty-three dollars in the red with a, with a six percent for the dispatchers, six seventy-seven oh eight in the red for the shift leads. They see this, people aren't, they, they see what's coming and I, I just lost my senior dispatcher, my most experienced dispatcher because of pay and because of stress for the job, right? She saw the writing on the wall or she's seeing and, and we're talking about retention. I know that's been a, a big issue that we've talked about in several of our meetings and everything. Retention, reducing pay is, is not a good retention tool. It's actually going to lead to an exodus as opposed to drawing people in, getting them trained and getting them to stay here. On paper, it looks really good because you're going to give them a six percent raise. It's not a six percent raise. It's only on paper. If you look at how it affects them overall, they're losing money to work for this county. I would, I would recommend, I, I gave, on the second page here, it, I've got it broken down to a six percent raise, a seven percent raise. And if you were to give them an eight percent raise, that puts them in the black, two hundred and twenty-four dollars for dispatchers and only a hundred and forty-five dollars for shift leads annual. All right. And if you break that down to a percentage of what everyone else is getting across the board, it's less than one percent of a raise that they're going to be giving. All right. Just for them to break even, it's going to have to be at an eight percent. All right. Couple that into, again, with the increase that, that they're having to pay for insurance, it's actually still not breaking even. They're, they're still going to lose money on that, right? I'm trying to get people here. I'm trying to get people retained. I'm trying to get people to man our dispatch centers so we can serve our community. And I can't do that, we can't do that if, if we're going to be taking money away from them. The hours that they work right now are, are long enough. I'm doing everything that I can and I've, I've come up with, I've been working on this for months. And I've, I've spoken to Ms. Kyra ad nauseam about it and I've spoken to Cheryl about it and even Ms. Michelle about it. And I'm still working on coming up with a plan that's going to be legal and, and something that's going to benefit everybody and that will eliminate, eliminate overtime. But the six percent is, is, it won't do, gentlemen and ladies, just putting it out there. It's, it's not going to be enough for them to sustain and it's not going to be enough for us to sustain our, our workforce in, for the county, for the sheriff's department, for nine-one-one. I would ask that you would look at that and please come up with a number that is going to be, I don't even want to say beneficial, but that, that's going to ease, ease the pain and ease the tension for the dispatchers because they know, they see, they watch, they've been watching the hearings and everything and they're, they're kind of seeing which direction this is going. I don't want to lose people. It's hard enough. I've, I've got open positions right now and I can't keep them and I just lost another one because I see things like this happen. Our pay needs to be where we can sustain people, where, where we can retain people and this is just the opposite of what our intended purpose is.
Well, I don't think that we can do away with overtime fully because we might chip away at it over the years, you know, trying to get it down and get this percentage up there, but I think that we need to look at it a little closer because retention is anything in the budget, you know, and nine-one-one and sheriff and ambulance and we have to have those types of people. And I've heard comments, you know, that they knew what the job was to take them, but we, it takes a special kind of person to do these jobs. You know, you can't just throw anybody in there and expect them to do these jobs. But some people claim that you can, but you can't, because I've been there.
Mr. Shaw, you made a very good point. I mean, yeah, and, and that's on the premise because with the amount of people that we have or the amount of positions that we have open right now, we still have to train them. And the people who are going to be training them is going to be myself and my two shift leads, right? And until we get everyone full, we're going to have, there's going to be overtime that's going to be incurred because I have empty seats, right? And if they're going to be training, that's going to be taking two, two people out of my work rotation who would know my dispatchers come in and fill that seat and we're paying them a time and a half, or I can do it and I'm on salary, so it's not costing the county any money that way. And I, I noticed that and I know that and that's part of my job and I'm willing to do that, right? To do my part to save one little bit of overtime, you know, for the county that I can do. But then again, you know, I, I have, I have a family as well, right? And if, as soon as we get people trained and as soon as we can get them in the chairs and we can get this ship afloat again, eventually, you know, it will right itself. But right now it's, it's, these are growing pains because we have people coming in, we have people leaving. And they see what's going on. There, there's better opportunities that they see for them that's causing them to leave, whether they go out in the private sector or whether they're transferring to other departments that pay more money. They have to feed their families as well. And we can't do that if we're taking money out of their pockets and food off of their table.
And one of the reasons that this was put in place years ago too is because it is actually cheaper to pay overtime than it is to hire additional full-time people and have to pay for benefits. It's just something that has to be taken into consideration and, and we do that kind of the same way back there in the jail. You know, according to the jail staffing analysis, we should have more jailers, but we are getting by with what we have. But we are also working overtime back there in the jail and paying them considerable amount of overtime to cover things versus hiring more full-time people that then you have to pay benefits to. And so there are other departments that look at it in the same way, that it's actually cheaper to pay the overtime than it is to hire more full-time people, which is a possibility if, you know, if you start cutting out that overtime, then you're going to have to replace, somebody's got to work those hours. And whether it's somebody that's getting paid at straight time or somebody getting paid at time and a half versus paying your, your benefits at the end of the day.
You know, by definition, you know, dispatcher, everyone in law enforcement, with the sheriff's department, if fire EMS, you know, by definition, by law, we are essential personnel, we're first responders, right? So with that, that means that we have to be in the chair. Those positions have to be manned twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, no exceptions, right? And it, it, it's hard to do. People are going away to, because the county's, because the county that they're working for isn't paying them what they need to be paid to keep the life on the house, right? It, it's tough. I get it. And in that regard, I don't want to say it's a necessary evil, but it is, it is necessary. And they don't make that much money anyway. We're still the third lowest paid dispatch center in, in every county that touches us. And every, and out of the ten counties that are equal in size or similar in size and population to us, we're the second lowest paid behind, in front of only Jennings County still, right? And they're getting ready to get raises as well. I don't know what they're going to peak, but the way that it's going right now, they're going to keep going forward and we're going to be actually taking a half a step back if this current budget proposal goes through. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to the counties. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the counties, it's not fair to the citizens.
One thing, I was getting ready to say, I've, I've bounced this off the wall a million times, um, since it come up and, you know, I'm not sure that there's a clear cut answer for, I mean, we all know that the overtime, you know, when we're sitting here trying to set a budget, it's, you know, it's a big, it's a big animal for us to handle. Um, but the one thing that, that I thought about and this is something that I, I want the council, council to think about, um, before we, um, you know, vote on this next, next meeting, next month. Um, I, I, I really feel like for now, where we're at, um, because we do know if, if, if we take that away, it is going to affect, uh, these employees. But my thoughts are, you know, I would like to see a committee formed with representative from the sheriff, the jailer, EMS, the public safety, uh, where this overtime is a, is a concern. But that committee with, with the representative from each of those and then three council members, um, and, and start this committee. Leave the budget, um, you know, as presented with the overtime in there, you know, for twenty-six and then work on this moving forward. Um, because I just don't see an answer, um, you know, in it until we do more research, you know, we, this kind of hit quick and it's hard to make that decision because it's going to affect a lot of things here. And I just don't think we've, um, put enough time in it yet to make that decision. I, I don't want to be, uh, reactive, I would rather be proactive and form this committee and start working on this and see if it's something that we can help not only, you know, through the overtime, but you know, through scheduling, that kind of thing and try to help these guys, you know, uh, they don't want to pay any more overtime than what they have to. Uh, you know, Brent and I have talked about this m- multiple times over the years. It, you know, they know overtime's a big issue, but they also have to do their job and they have to be able to retain the employees that they have and I think that retention is a big thing and if we, if we cut that, um, you know, I think we're going to have a problem with retention. Um, so, you know, that's something I would like for the council to, to consider. Um, you know, to, to, to leave it as presented and then put this committee together and start working on it. See if there's ways and see if we can contact more, uh, counties and see how they're dealing with it as well. I think it was great that we bring it to light because as Todd mentioned before, it, it is something that has really jumped up over the years that we've, you know, it, it's, it's, it's costing the county more and more money to do that. But we also don't want to cut away from our public safety and that's just my personal, um, feelings on that. So I hope that the council would maybe consider doing something along that line and leaving the budget, uh, the way it was and then get this committee together and see if we can work on it going forward.
I do think that's a, I think that's a great idea. Um, I think there needs to be a lot more thought process that goes into this. I think everybody can agree that, you know, you can't fully cut overtime out of these departments. You know, are there some ways that things could be trimmed down? Sure, I think everybody could probably agree on that. But, uh, there needs to be, I think, a, a lot more thought process that goes into it and consideration before we chip at it.
We'll do our due diligence, but I mean, a comment that you just made, it, it would actually concern me in the long run, you know, because you were talking about, and, and I appreciate with, with the committee and, and that's, that's actually a good thing to go, but when you're trying to dictate what schedules that we're going to work, it's, we're fluid, all right? And, and we, we don't work for the court system, we don't work for any other government agency, but we work Monday through Friday, eight to four, weekends and holidays off no matter what, we, we get called in, uh, because of, of natural disasters, uh, God forbid an active shooter, uh, a really bad accident, uh, hazmat event or type thing like that, so they have, it has to be fluid. So if, if we said something like that, that's the reason why, I mean, according to our employee handbook, is this gentleman right here, he's the one that approves and sets the schedule for us, right?
I, I understand your concerns, I don't think he is, is, you use the word dictate, the reason I'm saying it, I don't think that would be the goal of this group, it's getting everybody together and you guys helping us find a way. Sadly, you know, we all knew what we were signing up for, budgets can be difficult. But in this case, I agree with Bubba, I think we need to take our time, talk to you guys, but I just wanted to clarify. That would not be anything, you used the word dictate and, and that's not what this would be.
Establish.
Us working together. Yeah, we, we, we want to work with you all.
Yes, sir, and, and, and I get that, which brings up again, my final point of concern, I mean, i- if we leave things the way they are right now, right? Uh, my overtime's been taken out of my budget and it was transferred over to the sheriff, right? And to my understanding that that overtime has been taken out of his budget as well, so now, if we keep everything that is, then I'm going to have to be reallocated the overtime money into my, in, into our account where we can pay our dispatchers overtime.
I think, is that what you were saying was putting overtime back?
We were going to put it back in.
Everything's going to go, reset.
Yeah, that was my, for, for the, the original way that it was presented, um,
In this particular case, I guess I would disagree, I, I mean, I, I like his proposal and from a budgetary standpoint, going forward, you're better to raise a person's salary and get away with this, from this mandatory four-hour built-in deal that, that should have never been made, and I'm not mad at anybody, but this is much more clear, this is much more legal, this is much more upfront and from a budgetary standpoint going forward, and I, I am totally for raising these salaries up to where they need to be and cutting that overtime line, I'm totally for that. I mean, I, that's my opinion, I'll, I'm not going, if we want to stick with the overtime, I just think going forward, this is a much more clear way to go.
Mr. Kelly has got a, a twelve-hour shift that he can propose that would work.
And we, we could do that and then, and again, that's where, that's where the sheriff and I, I mean, we would manage our employees, I mean, we're the managers, that's what we do. We, you know, to make sure that, that we're going to be in compliance, uh, Mr. Armstrong, thank you, I, I appreciate that. And, and, uh, I've been working on this for a long time and like I said, I've been, I've, I've been talking to, to my sheriff here many times and we work together. I've spoken to Ms. Kyra and Ms. Cheryl, Ms. Michelle even, uh, again, to where they're tired of us, okay, I, and I know. And this is something that, that we need to, you know, that we need to go so we can get everyone back on track. Where we're going to save the county money, it may not cost you anymore, it may not save you anymore, but it, we're going to, if we keep it at, for lack of a better word, a status quo for where we're at right now. And I think that, this right here is going to be the best option for everyone and then we're just going to have to manage our, our employees' overtime.
Can I commend you for, for bringing, doing the work and, and bringing that offer to us, so, thank you.
It might cost us a little upfront, but, uh, it, it, it might work.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate everybody's input today and I also say thank you for allowing, uh, Kelly to try to explain things to you a little bit. Um, and I think that that's a great idea, uh, President Abbott, that we put a committee together to move forward with this, to try to work this out. We are willing to do our part on our end. Um, I also just want to make a, a comment that when the budget hearings were held, um, I think the decision to, to address this and, and, and it does need to be addressed, was made based on numbers that we didn't know what the true numbers were at the time either. Um, that one particular line item included not just overtime, uh, but vacation time, comp time and, and holiday pay all came out of that. And then after running reports and separating that out, it was a, it, it gave us a better understanding and I don't know, I sent you those emails, but I think they were a little bit difficult to read, the way it jumbled them up. And I need to do a better job of getting that bill, print those out for you guys can understand those, because when I recently ran a report, uh, Monday, what we famously call Time Card Monday this past week, I ran that report again to see where we were at. And dispatch is only, and I say only, but dispatch was responsible for twenty-five percent of that overtime that we've been paying out. And, uh, the biggest part of that overtime is being consumed, um, by the jail. And, uh, and again, we're, I've been working on things with Captain Ward back in the jail or try to do some things too. I spoke to some of you guys about that, we talked about moving some money around from some of the, uh, open positions that we have that we haven't used to try to get some overtime and we recently hired one last week. Um, a former employee that left wanted to come back and work some overtime, so we're going to try to, um, work that individually in a little bit here and there to try to, uh, chip away at that back in the jail as well. So I, I think that's a great idea to put a committee together and, like I said, we're willing to do our part moving forward to try to figure out how we can handle on this.
Yeah, I think, I think they're all good options and this is a good option as well. It's just something the council needs to, uh, decide which way we're going to set it for twenty-six. Um, but like I said before, I just don't think we can, uh, I don't want to make a knee-jerk reaction that's going to cause, um, issues with our retention early on. So that's why I thought maybe the committee, um, which, you know, I guess, uh, I might as well get that started. So if, if you guys are willing to be on that committee, get one of the guys from EMS as well.
Sign me up, I'm ready.
All right, so you guys will go on there and then I need three council people that are willing to work on it. All right, there you go, there's the three, Brad, Andrew and Todd. So we'll get that committee started, um, and we'll try to get, I know it's tough for you guys on meeting times, but I'll get with you and, and, uh, the EMS gentleman and, uh, see when the best time would be and we need to get that started right away. That way, uh, you know, going forward, we can have people looking into this and look at other avenues that maybe we can take going down the road that's going to help us with these overtime issues. And I, I appreciate all the work that you've done trying to make that work out as well and that may be a better option for us, you know, we just, but those are the things that I, I feel like this come up pretty quick, you know? Um, and I just don't want to cut all that out and, and then have a big problem with our retention and I'm afraid that's what would happen if we cut it, um, you know, like we had talked about maybe doing. So that's something we just need to decide and, uh, we'll go ahead and get this committee, committee started and start working on it.
Well, I appreciate your insight because you, you called it right down the middle and, and that's exactly what's happening right now, so I appreciate you recognizing that.
All right, thank you guys. Anybody got any other questions for, for Brent and them on their budget part two? I mean, it's just, that's the reason why we're here this morning, to try to get this ironed out so that we can make a decision at, at October meeting.
You know, and Kelly has done a great job doing his research, I kind of let Kelly take this, uh, by the horns and run with it. And he's done a really good job and I don't have time to validate every single number that he comes up with and things, but I did have my jail lieutenant in my office, um, two weeks ago. He came from Floyd County Sheriff's Department, where we've hired him from. Um, his wife also works at Harrison County Sheriff's Department, so I asked him, I said, hey, where's your wife work at? He said Harrison County Sheriff's Department, I said, what does she do there? She's a dispatcher. I said, what shift does she work there? He said, just exactly what we do here at Washington County. He said, and I can tell you that coming from Floyd County, Floyd County works the exact same shift we do here at Washington County. So it's really not uncommon for these dispatchers to work those twelve-hour shifts and to work that four hours of overtime, um, because it's just something that is a common practice with emergency services, again, in lieu of hiring more people to, to, to do that. But again, that's something that, you know, the committee can, can dig deeper into and, and, uh, find that information out. Again, we appreciate you guys' time today, thank, thank you everybody for, um, being willing to listen to us.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. All right, Tony, you guys want to come up? See if there's any questions there. Well, pretty much, Bubba, you pretty much answered. Like I said, the, the packet we handed out to you guys previously, uh, had, uh, most of the numbers in there we could come up with. And, uh, I think it's a very good idea you, you brought forward with this committee thing. I mean, we'd be willing to participate in that to try to come up with, try to come up with a solution. But, um, we're kind of, like I said, we're just kind of at a standpoint now of, of what we're going to be receiving for this, next year's budget and, and I kind of go from that point on. Uh, like I said, we, I do go ahead, I still want to just go ahead and just plan on removing that floater position, uh, for now. And, uh, go from, go from that point on and, and try to come up with a solution, like I said, with this committee. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking we can possibly get some answers out of that if we can. Like I said, we've come up, we've worked this and worked this and worked these numbers and worked these numbers till we're both, uh, cross-eyed, so it's kind of a solution of, you know, what's going to happen down the road, so.
I was late to the party, so what exactly are you wanting to do?
Again, off two employees.
We lost two, but we replaced them and.
I've replaced, I've already hired two, yeah, so.
We started, start this week, one started last week, one starts this week.
Yeah. So I think back in our last budget discussion, you know, when we first talked, um, with, with Tony and Mike, uh, from the EMS, we were going to allow that floater, so, um, but, but in talking to Tony, he said he, he didn't think that was really going to help, um, you know, his overtime problem. So he was willing to cut that out, which would be, uh, I think if we, if I had it wrote down here correct, um, an EMT on that floater position would be around seventy-four grams. Um, and a paramedic would be somewhere around ninety-three, you know? So if they do cut that out, we're going to save a little there that we had thought we were going to put in. Um, but we need to determine if we're going to, um, you know, leave that, uh, overtime line there as presented, um.
They wanted option A.
Yeah. Thank you. So if you look back at your packet that they put together for us, what they presented there was option A was the one that, that we had looked at, I don't know if you guys got that in front of you or not, but.
Amen.
It was in the, the red folder that Mike passed out the last time. So basically it was, it shows there a total budget increase of eighty-two, four twenty-four. Yeah. If you take that floater out, that's what you'd be looking at.
Yeah, if you take.
And that stuff that, yeah, and that stuff that we really can't, we have no control over, on the, on, you know, that was the raise for the employees and that's also, we had to raise our, our other budgets for, because everything's going up. And I did, Michelle did give you the paper too that shows where we're at right now as far as, um, on the public safety budgets there. The top one, that fund, um, eleven fifty-one is EMS line. Which if, if you look at that, we had appropriated, um, a hundred and eighty-six thousand, six eighty-six, uh, last year. So to this point in the year. So, to this point in the year, on the EMS one, they've, they've used about one fifty-one of that. Still have thirty-five thousand left in that overtime, you know, budget to get through the rest of twenty-five. Now, keep in mind, we've got, you know, some holidays, vacations, you know, there's still some of that that's probably gonna come out of there. But my point being, it's, you know, it's running about where they thought it was gonna run there as far as what we appropriated for last year and twenty-five.
Right now, looking at for the end of August, we ain't got September's numbers yet. We won't get them till today or tomorrow. Uh, we're looking at the end of August, projected payroll budget being under seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. When it comes to payroll and no names more, we've had these meetings before where you, you gotta look at payroll as a whole because of the makeup of our people. It's not like if we have a dump truck driver off or we'll just use a county garage, whoever the highest paying job is there, supervisor off or a crane operator or whatever, you don't have the option of not having that person in there. And vice versa, we have to fill that spot. And we may have that crane operator working a truck to fill a shift if somebody calls in. And that position may be just an EMT position because that's the only person we got. We don't have the option of downing that truck. So, our payroll as a whole, you gotta look at that as a whole. I know, but like I said, we've brought this discussion up several times with the animals board. I think they all understand it, but you gotta look at payroll as a whole because those line items do fluctuate. I mean, for the last five years, I know they keep saying they can't do it. Payroll needs to be out, broke out as a line item by itself, not each one of them. I know you guys had the discussions only overtime and all of that, but you gotta look at overtime as a whole, so. Overtime as a whole, your budget is one million, one hundred thousand this year, nine fifty-four. And at the end of the year, we're looking at one million, eighty-three thousand. So, we're looking at payroll as a whole being under budget. Uh, we've had people off this year, we've had, what, three people off for injuries this year? We've had to fill in with whoever we can get. It could be a supervisor, it could be a paramedic for an EMT spot, it may be an advance for a paramedic spot. May even be me, may even be Tony. In that case, you get free gratis, but payroll as a whole, we're looking good on our numbers as payroll as a whole for the year end.
Any, any question, you guys got any questions for?
So, what we're talking about is striking the floater and putting the fifty thousand back in the overtime.
Going up, obviously.
Option A, yeah, so that, that kinda breaks it all down.
That's page one on the handout getting folded.
Yeah, that would be running it with option A. And then, like I mentioned, we'll have the committee, you know, start working on that and seeing if, you know, there's some way we can help everyone. And I just think that would be the best road to take here moving forward. That's, that's my personal opinion.
So, you want to look at.
Michelle and I have talked about that too.
Or?
Well, so, what was that?
What, what are we looking at? Like I said, I come late to the party, I know Tony tried to tell me a little bit, but he also come late to the party.
I think the, what the. What he was talking about is forming a committee with three of us, all of you guys, and everybody putting their heads together in the, moving forward in the future and discussing things. You know, if you guys see ways to cut things, you know, save money, this and that, whatever, you know, discuss it more instead of making an instant, you know, cut to something.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what, what I was trying to say. But that would be following, you know, their option A package, which, you know, they, they made some cuts and Mike done, Mike did a lot of work on this as well, so.
Right, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate all you guys, you know, doing what you can do to help us because, you know, every year it gets a little bit tougher and we all know that, you know, the things that we're dealing with, you know, from the state, that I think moving forward, we're gonna have to get, you know, more creative and hopefully that this committee will be able to do some things there that'll help all of us together to, to get it to, you know, the best we can get it every year, so. Anybody else got any questions or comments about that, guys?
Yeah, you guys, you guys like that idea?
Or this committee?
Yeah.
Yeah. That committee is a good idea.
Okay.
Just like I said, there's gonna have to be a lot of changes coming down the road, so.
Yeah.
I think that would be a mighty fine idea.
Keeps everybody in the loop that way and.
Yeah, yeah, and that way everybody.
Takes assumptions away and stuff like that.
Because one thing I, you know, and this is one thing that I wanna say, and I think there's been a lot of miscommunication, sometimes it goes around, you know? And when this all got brought up through our budget discussions, through the hearings, you know, it wasn't in stone that we were gonna take this overtime away. It was just something that we were looking at and something I think we need to look at, you know, moving forward because it has become a big part of that budget on public safety. And I don't think at any point in time we had ever made a decision to go ahead and take that away. And I think that, that rumor got around that we were definitely taking it away and that wasn't the case. It was just in discussions and, and these discussions have to, you know, we have to have these discussions. And I think the more information that we can get about it and the more, you know, work that we do going forward, there again, we're gonna be proactive with it instead of reactive and just making a snap decision and then that causing us problems with the things I was mentioning with retention and just being able to keep the public safety, you know, staffed and that's what we wanna do. And it's a hard enough problem for you guys, like we've all talked about it before, and just finding people, period, you know? So, I'm afraid if we made that cut to that part of the budget, it would, it would hurt us with that retention, so. But at no point in time were we ever set in stone. The, these were just discussions that we were having to, to try to get our budget and do our due diligence to the taxpayer to try to set that budget. And, and those are things that we have to look at. But I think that was some false information that got around that we were definitely cutting it and that wasn't the case. So, that's why we called this meeting. We wanted to talk a little bit more about it and try to put our heads together and come up with something. But I think at this point in time, that's our best option and, and that's just my personal opinion. And I know we'll make that decision at the next meeting, but, yeah, I think that, that may be the best way for us to go here moving forward.
I think your retention thing hits it on the head. That's gonna be the biggest challenge you're gonna have. Anything shy of what that is? Going with twenty-four seventy-two, that would help bring people in. But it's also gonna cost you, uh, without looking at it roughly, three hundred thousand dollars more to do away with the overtime that go to twenty-four seventy-two's. Will that help us? I think that would be a big step up for us to want people to come to work for us like it used to be back in the day. That would be a big plus if we could afford it, but three hundred thousand dollars more to add four more employees is you're getting rid of overtime, but you're adding all the overhead, so.
Well, and Michelle, this lady to my right, I tell you, without her, I would be lost. As you can tell, she, she keeps me on my toes, but we talked about it a lot too. And, you know, I think, I think a lot of that idea to form that committee comes from Michelle as well. And I, I appreciate the work that she's done because, like I said, we've been slinging stuff against the wall ever since these discussions started. She's getting probably sick of me saying, "Here, run this number, here, run these, these numbers," or "Look at it this way," or "Look at it that way." We've, we've probably ran it a kazillion different ways at this point. But, you know, I think, I think that's our, our best option moving forward. That's there again, my opinion. I appreciate you guys coming in, thank you.
Like I said, you guys can always come to the animals board meetings, you know, I mean.
Thursday, eight o'clock. So, more than welcome.
They're early, but.
They are early.
They are early, but.
Usually have donuts though.
They're always.
That's a good thing for a fact, I mean, you gotta have donuts.
Our doors are always open if there's any, ever swing. Uh, we're kinda like Michelle, we'll add her numbers, it's kinda matching up with what we're saying. So, our doors is always open too. You want to throw something at the walls if it sticks, come on down. We don't wanna throw it in the back of the truck, so dangle, just because sometimes things do stick to the walls there, so.
Alright.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Rick, did you have anything this morning? You didn't get, you don't wanna talk today? Usually you always talk. You're just here for the entertainment. Alright, gotcha. Alright, let's see here. There was one other question I had and Mr. Ewan might be able to help us with this. But with the, before, and we need to know this moving forward before we get this budget set in stone. But my question was about the, the, the fairgrounds deal, Todd.
Yeah.
What, I mean, what exactly on that fairgrounds line are we, we looking to leave in that budget?
Did you pass those on down?
Uh, yeah, hang on, I'm passing, he's got a couple, he's here. Pass those around. Todd, you wanna, you wanna go over that then?
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
How did everybody got it?
The, the top part there was the expenditure previously. That's, that forty-eight, seven thirty-three was all benefits, insurance, overtime, so on and so forth. The second line was the annual fuel cost and that's just gasoline, not diesel. Which basically was, was the mowing aspect. So, it comes up to fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars total expenditure versus if we took the lowest bid of the four, three or four that we've received, be twenty-one thousand dollars a year, that's thirty-five, not weeks necessarily, but thirty-five mowings, which should be more than adequate, keeping in consideration that there'll be a couple additional mowings, you know, right before the fair to make sure the fairgrounds looks good before our county fair. And then proposing, well, we, in the process of rewriting the contract, should be ready next Tuesday to make up the difference in the duties for the groundskeeper's position being eliminated. The fair board will assume all responsibility for taking care of the fairgrounds, less the mowing. County's contract, twenty-one thousand dollars would come out of the commissioner's budget. And then the twenty thousand dollars for the fair board to do as they see fit. They are the boots on the ground, they're the ones that need, uh, they're the ones that knows what needs done up there. So, that brings, brings the total to forty-one thousand dollars. So, if you subtract that off fifty thousand, five thirty-three, you got a cost savings to Washington County of ninety-five, hundred and thirty-three dollars. They are going to take the remaining funds, if you use this twenty thousand dollars as our number for an annual payment. Got three months left in the year. We're gonna give them five thousand dollars, which they are going to put toward, they've been working with Brett Miller and gonna plug into his camera system and going to add six additional cameras up there. And so, they're going to turn right around and use the prorated amount that's left for the end of the year, which is five thousand dollars to do that. And it's all pretty well cut and dried.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that because I think everybody was just, you know, we weren't sure exactly how that was gonna shake out. So, I appreciate you providing that information. Anybody have any questions for Todd on that then?
I, I have a question, Todd, for clarification.
Yeah.
On the fair board contracting funds, just for clarification, am I understanding that that is not to hire a person to do these jobs? That is for separate jobs contracted as they come up, as they see fit?
That's right.
So, it's true elimination of the decision?
Yes, yeah, this, this is not, well, that's their call. They can take that twenty thousand dollars and hire whoever they please. But the idea here is this really makes more sense because, obviously, you councilmen and commissioners really have no business micromanaging the fairgrounds. It does belong to the county. Our goal is to see that the upgrades and the work and the upkeep gets done. That's the goal. Make sure it gets done and it looks nice, necessary repairs are made when they need to be made because you know how, how it is with, even with your own home. If you let things go too long, you know, a problem that would've cost five hundred dollars to fix, you let it go, it ends up costing much, much more. So, that's the idea is preventative maintenance and let the fair board do their job and take care of the fairgrounds with our blessing and give them the tools to do it. And I think it'll be a much better situation.
How are we gonna explain? I'm not being smart, but how are we gonna explain that it hasn't been kept alive? And can't blame it on Randy because he didn't have the tools, they wasn't giving him the equipment and paint. So, I, how do you, how do you explain this?
Explain what again? I'm not following you.
Okay, there's buildings that were needed to be painted.
Yeah, that, that was his job.
Yeah, but they wouldn't give him the paint, yeah, but.
I don't know where you heard that at, but.
I don't, I, I was up with it.
So, what do you really ask?
And then, and then the floor joints, have you looked at those yet? Over there in one building, there were the gravel just pushed underneath there.
Yeah, sure, the band boards need replaced. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that there aren't repairs up there that need to be done, that should've been done. These little things, right now, they're fairly minor and this is the whole point of, this just makes much more sense. So, they know what needs to be done. I say let them do it and it will get done. It hasn't been getting done like it should, everybody knows that, so. It hasn't been getting done like it should, everybody knows that, so, uh, this is a solution.
So you, kid ministers are gonna oversee the fair board then, make sure it's done? Or the grounds?
We, we always have.
Is your question that they're gonna oversee the mowing contract, is that?
No, 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 the upkeep.
The upkeep of the buildings?
Yeah.
I have all the confidence in the world in the fair board. If you give them the proper tools. I have no problem at all, their work ethic, those people that volunteer for all these events up there, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning their work ethic at all, it will get done.
I got a question. This up top, the thirty thousand that we already give, I'm sure that they wanna know that too.
Yeah, both of these are separate from the thirty thousand, they're just the replacement for Randy, correct?
That's correct.
That correct, yes, that's what we were just sitting here looking at.
That thirty thousand dollars is, is what they've been receiving for.
Yeah.
I don't know, probably forty years. Well, it's, it's not always been thirty, it's been thirty thousand for a long time.
Well, this being able to sustain the repair that needs to be done.
If I had a million dollars, I could think of things to repair up there.
I'm just saying.
But to answer your question, no.
Yes, I, I agree.
So I guess we could start a GoFundMe page, but there's always things that need to be done. Lot of painting needs to be done. Lot, lot of little things that could make the place look better. Keep the place from rotting down. But this is very workable, this will help. And make it better.
Alright, anybody else got any questions on, on this particular deal? Todd, thank you for.
Yeah, no problem.
clarifying that and.
Thank you, Todd.
I would, I would encourage anybody and everybody if they, you know, you don't, don't take my word for it, if you wanna know what's going on up there, talk to the fair board members. Or better yet, talk to the dozens and dozens, there's probably a hundred of them, volunteers over the years that, um, donate their time, to make that place what it is. We have a very good fair every year up there, people work very hard and trying to help. Get a lot of volunteers and the next time you see one, you oughta thank them. Better yet, if you get a chance, I'm sure they'd be willing to, accept some, uh, some help, uh, from anybody else who would like to volunteer up there, even if it's just a few hours, makes a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Appreciate it.
Alright. Anybody else on the council having questions budget wise?
I did have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we gonna include that, uh, four percent raise to the, uh, plan commission director?
Uh, yes.
As part of his salary?
I cannot.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
That's why we, yeah, you brought that up forward.
Just because it's part of his salary.
Yeah.
Excuse me, what was that again?
The director position. That's part of Travis's.
Right.
Salary, he didn't receive that.
Oh, but you made that correction, right?
That's what we're discussing.
That's what we're discussing.
Oh, well, why was it left out?
We've never done it on the stipends. We give the raise on their.
Oh, the other half?
Yes.
Cause his salary is split.
Split, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Two different.
Yeah, I see.
So one we did, but we did.
So he's getting four percent on portion of his salary.
On portion of.
Right, I understand, yeah, I think he knows that. We've nev, you've never done that before, you've never given the re- raise on the stipend, yeah, that's fine.
But it's. Up you all.
Yeah, it's up to the council, so that is something that's, you know.
Yeah, I just feel like since it's part of his salary.
I'm sure he would appreciate it.
Just my opinion.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's whether or not we wanna add that in there or not, but, you know. When she runs these numbers, we need to know whether it needs to be on that half or on all of it.
And is that gonna be everybody with the?
I think it's all fair.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll run it then, so add that, um, so when we run these numbers with the, the new changes and putting the overtime and stuff back in then.
Especially with the increase on insurance.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I agree. Okay. Alright, anything else before, um, we end this discussion and then have Michelle turn these numbers for us for the October meeting so that we can, get this budget put together and present it to the state? Preston, we'll just go around and, anything else?
No, um.
Todd?
No, sir.
Good, Andrew?
So I am.
Bradley?
I'm good.
Okay. Michelle, do you have any questions? I guess you probably need to knock more.
Now I gave you a news article, Harrison County is reducing our portion of the riverboat, so it's around. Two percent to one percent is what will be received.
Yeah, that was just something she had, had caught and wanted to make everybody aware, so.
Actually, someone, um, actually turned me on to that article.
So that will be a decrease.
As of today, Harrison County still has not sent us anything telling us that, but.
Alright, I don't have anything else, so. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll get these, alright?
Said it.
Motion by Todd, second by Andrew, all those in favor writing, alright, meeting adjourn.